Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting of April 7th, 2022 to order. Do we have any special intentions? While we're young, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for the prayers for the council administration in the audience for a relative of mine and a young man that played in the Kenner Recreation. His family has been part of the Kenner community for many, many, many years. His father coached all of his brothers played. His name is Kerry KK originally, and he passed last week. And really, nobody expected it. It was one of those things that happened that only God can explain. And I ask for your prayers for him and also him and his family. I'll also ask for one of the other coaches at Buddy Lawson, Ms. Vanessa Jones, and her family had a fire. And they live in the Pollock area, which we call back of the track area, and their entire home burned. And obviously, they are in need of many things right now. So I have information on how to get in touch with them if anybody would like to support because no one was hurt. But thank God for the Kenner Fire Department coming out doing a fantastic job, not only for their home, but the neighbor's home next door. So we appreciate. And they wanted me specifically to say to tell the Fire Department, the Amulash Police Department, thank you for their support. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. George? Councilman Brannigan.
Yes, I hope that everyone would pray for the Fricky family, the lady that was in the carjacking two weeks ago. I understand that the family is really, really taking it hard, and it's a bad situation. So please pray for that family.
Councilman Segura?
Thank you. Just the current events right now, the nun that was been kidnapped was from Kenner. So certainly want to keep her in our prayers that she gets found and brought back safe so she can return to her service, God, in these countries that need her service. Thank you.
We were having someone say the prayer, but they have not shown up. So as a means to do a good prayer, stick to Godfather, if that's okay with you. What will just our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed in thy name, making him come, like what be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Councilman Segura, would you lead us into prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. You have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. We have correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads.
Mayor Zahn?
Thank you, Council Chairman. Few things on my comments for today. Kenner raised artist John Baptiste won five Grammys, including Album of the Year for "We Are." He had 14 nominations. John Baptiste is a leader of the house band on the Late Show at nighttime. He's also a comes from Kenner, the Metairie area, so that's something that we can all be proud of. The family has already reached out to me, as I know David Baptiste very well, his uncle, and would probably like to do something in the near future, so that's something we'll look at with him. Another good news is Drew Brees opened up the Build Strong Academy of Greater New Orleans, right here in the city of Kenner. Funded by the Brees Dream Foundation, this academy trains students in skilled construction trades and helps with job placement at no cost to the students. The academy is located at 2506 Williams. We are with the help of Mark Loriozo and of everyone that's in the Rivertown area. Kenner Heritage Park in Rivertown, First and Third Weekends in May. Music in the Park and Movies in the Park are back. So Music in the Park will be back May 6th and 20th at Heritage Park. Movies in the Park will be back May 7th and the 21st at Heritage Park. The Juneteenth Festival will be on June 18th and June 19th in Rivertown also. Lot of good events going on. In working with General Services and Public Works, we have started repairs on fences throughout the city. You'll notice that. Locations again in Rivertown and Lake Town and also in Veterans Park. So a lot of good things going on with that. We do have T-ball, baseball, and recreation, softball, soccer registrations are still open at kenner.reck.com. So T-ball starts April the 11th. Soccer starts April 19th. Baseball and softball starts the week of April 25th. Those are the things that are going on that has been moving since the last council meeting and things that we are planning over the next couple of months. There will be a town hall meeting on the Dunk Canal Project. I understand there was a civic association meeting the other night where there was some discussion on this, and this is something we've been working on already. I am going on April 19th at 6:00 PM in the council chambers here at Macy's. If Tom wants to take the podium now, if you would let us have a brief presentation of where we are with that, because it has been an ongoing issue. We recognize that as an administration, and the council recognizes that. This is something I think we need to get the whole city to recognize where we are with it. This has about four engineers on it besides the contractor. There's a lot of people involved in it. And also, it's a city-state project. Lot of issues with it. Tom is going to go over a few things, but Tom also has a presentation of someone else here who is the, I guess you'd say, the engineer on, not the head engineer, but right at working with the design.
Construction engineer.
Construction engineer. So if you, Council President, if you give a little time on it, this is like a, you know, information on the April 19th meeting, but just so you all know, when y'all come to the April 19th meeting that's open to the public town hall meeting, you'll have a better idea of it.
Oh, good. Mr. Schreiner?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. This Duncan Canal Project, we've talked about it many times, but just to refresh you, your memory, it was bid back in March of 2019. Had a bid price of $11.9 million. Notice proceed was issued in June of 2019. Project has 505 working days, and that's a little different from calendar days. If you want to get the real calendar time, you just divide by five and multiply by seven. So it's roughly a two-year project. And we're well beyond that now. There have been many delays on the project, which we'll get into a lot more detail at our public meeting. But, you know, we have had the usual things that you've heard of, the COVID, the hurricanes, and we've also had the contractor walked off the project. He had to be told to come back to work on the project. Also, what has happened is that the contractor changed the way that he was going to isolate the project, that is, de-water the project so he could work. In order to do this, it took redesign on his part and a certain delay to fabricate. If anyone's passed by the project, they probably see we have steel structures in the canal, and that's a slide gate system that he designed and is using. Good news on this project is that it is projected to be substantially complete by the end of this month. What that means is that they will be pouring the last section of the box this week, and once that's complete and poured, they'll start reconstructing the road on the south side, which is the eastbound traffic. And then we'll have traffic opened up in both ways, in both directions. You know, after that, there'll be minor work to complete the project, but substantially complete is what we're talking about by the end of the month. As the mayor said, there are different entities on the project, and the project started back in 2014. The previous administration hired NY associates who designed the project, and they had to design it to DOTD standards. So we had, of course, oversight from DOTD the whole way. And so the project was designed in accordance with, I'll say, DOTD standards. There's been a lot of discussion of why this, why that. Well, it was decided early on in that process that the project would not be a power supporter bridge. It'd be a ground-supported reinforced concrete box. There's been a lot of concern about that, but again, the project team designed that. There was a Geotech investigation. The foundation for this box was designed by the Geotech. So there's been concern about its sinking. We don't have that same concern. We don't believe the box has sunk much since it's been constructed. And we'll talk a little bit more about that after Easter. The city hired NY associates, but the construction team was a pick. These consultants solicit in response to requests for qualifications is what DOTD does. Many, many people compete for these projects, and Richard Lambert Consultants was selected. They're a very experienced group. They've administered to many, many projects like this. But their job is to administer the project from notice proceed to completion, and they're doing that now. I'm going to ask Arthur Ledet come up, and he'll give you a little bit more detail about what they're doing. But essentially, they're the construction engineers, and they do have a full-time inspector. But I'll let him tell you a little bit more about that.
Thank you. If you would just state your name and your company so we have that information.
Yes, sir. My name is Arthur Ledet. I work for Richard C. Lambert Consultants.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. As Tom mentioned, we did put in for this project some time ago, and we were selected by the state. Currently, we are manning the project with at least one inspector while all work is going on. And we have a few engineers from my office that oversee the construction issues that come up, paperwork, et cetera, everything that goes on on a day-to-day basis. We're in touch with the project pretty much every day, and we have somebody there all day, every day, while there was work being done. So I just really wanted to introduce myself and make sure, you know, everybody knew what was going on. We'll have a lot more information that we're going to work with Tom with to provide everybody more information on April 19th. And I guess we can answer a lot more questions there.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Mr. Schreiner, are you done?
Yes, sir. We're done unless there's some quick questions, but, you know, it wasn't our intention to go into a lot of detail tonight.
Understood. Thank you. Mayor?
That's it, Council Chairman. It's just to give you, kind of like I said, a little information before we go into the April 19th meeting after Easter, which I think will answer a lot of constituent questions and also more questions that y'all may have. But this project obviously affects the whole city, but it also affects three districts. So I know it's an ongoing thing for District 2, 3, and also 4.
Thank you.
Under resolutions, motions, and other items from the floor, I have a motion by Council Member Carroll, seconded by Council Member Wilmot, to amend the agenda to include Item 13A, a resolution urging support of the Kenner delegation for the Louisiana State Legislature and the Hoopla Out of Bounds Bash to select the Charles Teague Jr. Basketball Court of the Bertha Lee Jackson Play Lot and the A.P. Clay Center Basketball Court for restoration. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to object to us amending the agenda to include this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, I have a motion by Council Member Carroll, seconded by Council Member Wilmot, to add Item 13A to the agenda. Council members, please vote. Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brannigan?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Under the consent agenda, we have approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of March 25th, 2022. Item 2 is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 2268-22, Patriot Nation Men's Club, to hold a public gathering on May 7th, 2022, from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM for the purpose of an annual crawfish cook-off competition at the large public parking lot on Williams Boulevard in Rivertown, Kent, Louisiana. Item 3B is application number 2271-22, Williams Boulevard Baptist Church, to hold a public gathering on April 9th, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM for the purpose of a community Easter event at 3,000 Williams Boulevard in Kent, Louisiana. Item 3C is application number 2272-22, Our Lady of Perpetual Help Roman Catholic Church, to hold a public gathering on April 17th, 2022, from 6:00 AM to 8:30 PM for the purpose of an Easter sunrise mass at La Salle's Landing, Williams Boulevard and 3rd Street in Kent, Louisiana. That will conclude the consent agenda. I have a motion by Council Member Wilmot, seconded by Council Member McKenny. Council members, please vote. Councilman McKenny?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brannigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
And just to clarify, Madam Clerk, you said 6:00 AM to 8:30 PM. You did AM, correct?
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry. Yes, AM. Yes.
Yes. Just flew it correct.
Yes, thank you. Motion passes 7-0. Under the public appearance agenda, we have Item 8, public hearings and final passage. Item 8A is public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,877, an ordinance amending the 2021-2022 operating capital budgets to fund two part-time recreation department employees to assist at Musburgerlino Playground and amending ordinance number 7549. I have a motion by Council Member Brannigan, seconded by Council Member McKenny, for two meeting deferral. Any discussion? Council members, please vote. Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brannigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yay.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 8B is a public hearing regarding Resolution Number B-17228, a resolution calling a public hearing to determine whether the structure located at 1009 Lee Sand Drive, Kent, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal. I have a motion by Council Member Carroll, seconded by Council Member Wilmot, to remove this item from the agenda at the request of the Code Enforcement Department. Is there any discussion? Councilman Carroll?
Yes. I'd like to get an explanation for why we're removing it, because I am not aware of any additional information that was shared.
We've been informed that the building that was on the lady's house has been removed. It's all been demolished.
Correct. Correct. It's been done. It's done.
It's done. Yeah, I just didn't know about it. So that's why I am, obviously, that's what we want. Okay, well, thank you, Director. We're good. I just didn't know. So thank you.
No problem.
I believe, just so you know, I believe the code director sent the email out.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Council members, please vote. Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brannigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 9 is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of immovable property. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. Item 12A is summary ordinance number 12,956, an ordinance that the Kenner City Council limit the amount of a contract that the mayor can enter into without city council approval to $50,000 per year cumulatively. Multiple contracts per vendor, entity, and individual is subject to the $50,000 calendar limit. Any contract amount that exceeds the $50,000 calendar year limit must be brought before the council for approval. I have a motion by Council Member Brannigan, seconded by Council Member McKenny.
Mr. Morell?
I'd like to direct Almorella, 4260 East Royal Drive, 5th District, 50 years. I'd like to direct this to Ms. Sala. Give us an update, please, on what you found out, whether or not this has to go on the ballot as a referendum and requires a vote of the people. Can you give us an update on that, please?
Of course. As I notified the council last week, we, the mayor's office, did submit a letter requesting an attorney general opinion. I spoke to an assistant attorney general today about the status of that, and he cannot still give me an estimate as to when we will get our response. It has been given an attorney general opinion number, but he said he cannot give me an estimate as to when they'll be able to give us that opinion. So as of right now, I don't have any update as to when we'll get it, but it's in their hands, and they do plan to render an opinion at some point. I will continue to stay in contact with them, and that's all I have.
Okay. And in closing, I'd like to say this. The reason why I keep coming up here on this and questioning it, I don't think it's bad legislation, but I remember not too long ago when the council passed something, and they was giving the advice that it could have to go on the ballot as a referendum, and it did, okay? And they, the people of Kenner supported, and they voted for it, okay? But then, one of the people, the parties that was involved, okay, challenged it. Then the judge comes back, and now the vote of the people was completely overturned. And I don't know whether it's been taken out of the charter or not, and I'm talking about the unclassified employees of this city being prohibited from participating in political campaigns, okay? So I opposed it at the podium because I wanted them to become part of civil service if that was going to pass. I opposed it at the polls, too, because civil service was not amended to it. But it passed anyway, and then it caused us a lot of problems, because council didn't heed the advice, some advice that was given to them, and it come back, we had to pay legal fees and everything. Then the people went to the polls and voted for something, then the vote was overturned. And like I said, it's supposedly taken out of the charter. I don't know if it ever has been, okay? So that's why I continue to question this thing. I want it done right. I don't want to have to pay legal fees down the road. And, you know, if we voted for $100,000 cap, we should have to vote to reduce that cap to $50,000.
Greg Tapp, 3720, West Lyell Drive. Ms. Alice, I just, I want to ask you a question, if I may. If this is passed tonight, and the attorney general does determine that it is not proper, is what Mr. Morella said would actually could take place? So, and I ask that because she's, you know, we already know that we have given it to the attorney general for a opinion. I don't see where the problem would be if there is a number assigned to it, it is being worked on, that we have to necessarily move on it prematurely without really knowing if it could create a problem down the road or not. I, you know, as far as what the intent is, I have no problem with the intent. I just have the problem with the procedure. And so I'm going to ask this council, if you would. I would hope that we could give this another, till the next council meeting, or maybe to, I don't know how long it will take the attorney general to come up with it, because I'm sure they're pretty busy, too. But let me just bring this up. We just had something on the agenda that has been deferred probably eight or nine times, and that was 8A. So, I mean, we can, you know, it doesn't hurt to defer it, and it does make sense to make sure it is right. If we're going to do it, let's do it right. That way, we're all, we all can say, hey, we did it right. This is the way it should have been done. So I'm going to ask you to at least defer it one meeting. I don't know if, how much time Baton Rouge needs, but we know it's in the works, and we should at least be patient for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tapp. Ms. Alessandro?
Hello, Stacy Alessandro, District 4. Ms. Sala, when did you request the attorney general's?
Tuesday, two days after. It usually takes a week because it's not a letter. It's an actual memorandum of law, and we give exhibits. We submitted it on Tuesday of last week, the 29th.
Okay, so the council meeting was on?
That Friday.
Friday.
Yeah, the council meeting was that Friday, and then we submitted it Tuesday.
Okay.
And I got a letter back from the, with an attorney, Assistant Attorney General's name, an acknowledgement letter, and I spoke with him today.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess my only, my only comments were, I think this is great legislation, great legislation. After looking at the documents that some of us got with all the contracts, you know, I was stunned to see how many contracts there were for an even $90,000. Just $90,000, $90,000, $90,000, $90,000. Like, you would be stunned at just how many, it's just a coincidence that the cutoff is $100,000 that you have to come before the council to get approval, and then there's all of these $90,000 contracts. That is not okay. And I know you guys do find out about the contracts, but sometimes, from what y'all said at the last meeting, it's five or six months later. There's a huge gap. It's not like y'all are being informed as they're happening. This does not pass the smell test. This legislation needs to happen to protect the public, our funds, and also to keep the integrity of government, because what is happening now is an embarrassment. So the only thing I would say is, I guess, Ms. Sala, if they did pass this, and the attorney general comes back and says they would rather it be done another way, could they just rescind this ordinance?
Well, here's the thing. If the attorney general says that agrees with my opinion that the ordinance as it stands has no legal effect, then it means nothing. It's like a resolution. They would have to do a resolution the right way and get the people, you all, to vote again like you did before. So if the attorney general agrees with me, if they did vote on it today, and let's say we get an opinion in 30 days that they agree that it had no legal effect, then there's nothing to rescind. It had no legal effect.
Okay. So then why don't y'all just go ahead and do it? And then if it comes back, then it has no legal effect?
Well, the harm with that is if they vote on it in 17 days after the layover and all that, and notices are done, and it becomes law, and they try to enact it, and something happens to something that was not actually law, that would be a problem for the council and for the city of Kenner. If we're using something that was not properly passed as law to continue to do something, you understand, so it had no legal effect, then it had no legal effect, and whatever they use, whatever the city does, under this document that had no legal effect.
Is it, but would anybody really be, I mean, where's the harm? Because the only thing that they're asking to be done is that any contract that...
Ms. Alessandro, I'm sorry. Three minutes are up, please.
Is to come before them. Nobody, no contract.
Thank you.
If the council would like me to answer her question, I will answer it.
Councilman Brannigan, just one sec.
Ms. Sala, if I were to amend the deal from $50,000 to $100,000, does that eliminate the problem that you see? Because I've talked to several people, and I've been informed that we, I am not violating the charter by going down, that if I was going up, I would be violating the charter. And if we put this in place today, and we have 17 more days, do you think you'll have an answer from the attorney general by then?
And I used to work for the attorney general's office. I know to settle matters, it took us months because there were 15 people that have to approve it. An assistant attorney general writes the opinion, and then supervisors, and it goes all the way up to it gets to the attorney general. The reason why he can't give me an estimate normally, and again, their normal time period is a little over 30 days, so I don't know. He said expedited review got him to a place where it was able to get to the front of the line, but he can't tell me what other people will do and how long it'll take, even if he wrote the opinion in five days. It still has to go all the way to Baton Rouge and get to the attorney general, because it is an attorney general opinion. So I can't, he can't give me a deadline, and I can't guess and speak on behalf of the attorney general's office. Like I said, I spoke with him today. I'll continue to continue to speak with him weekly and see what's going on and where they are in the process. But that's the, your first, your question. I think those are your questions. I think that was your last question.
Okay, the first question was if I, since the charter says $100,000, if I change my legislation to $100,000, but leave the limits on contractors, does that eliminate the problem as you see it?
Yes, because I had problems, I gave you legal opinion on both issues, that we feel it violates both. So the 50, if you change the 50 to 100, we're making it redundant because it's already in the charter, which is a non-issue. The second part, however, might stop on the mayor's expenditure, or any mayor's expenditure power. That is also, I say, a violation of the charter and a violation of the mayor expenditure power. So it's still problematic. Yes, sir.
Well, I don't see if we pass this today, and then an Attorney General opinion comes back, that we can't just change whatever comes back if they say that we are violating this. So I plan to go forward with the legislation the way it is. I just handed out a spreadsheet, and this spreadsheet is the copies of the emails that we receive. And Mr. Taff brought this up last meeting, where do you get notification? And we do get notification of the contracts coming out. And when I went through, I had my assistant go back to January 1st of 2021, and the first email that we received was February 3rd, and it was for contract, February 3rd of 2021. It was for contracts in September of 2020, five months. One's at August 3rd, six months. One's at March 23rd, and that's 11 months. When you flip through this thing, the reason I did it like this is I'm going to have my assistant produce this spreadsheet monthly based on the emails that we get to help our council be able to see every contract that's out there. The only thing that I did notice on this is there are several contracts that were not on my prior spreadsheet that were on this when I cross-referenced them and matched them up. And it caused the numbers for 2020 and 2021 to increase from the last time. Now, I didn't look at any expenses that are, any contracts that were over $100,000, because normally we vote on those. And, but it was only the ones under $100,000. And between February 3rd of 2021, and the last, the last set of contracts that we received were March, I mean, April 4th of 2022, there were 362 contracts, and I was not able to find 56 of them on my other spreadsheet. I don't know why there was a difference there. But I, I believe that I am, I'm going forward with this legislation, and we'll take a vote and see where it falls. And then we'll have to deal with the Attorney General's opinion later. If it comes back negative.
Council President, may I answer some of his questions?
Yes.
Okay, so the original spreadsheet that you had last meeting, that was every contract in the system that is open and active, less than $100,000. So a contract could be on this list, but the services are complete, so we closed that project, so it wouldn't have been on the report you received from last meeting.
So when an email goes out, and we have these new contracts, how do we know if they close the night?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I know this comes from the mayor's office. The report that you had actually came from my office. I had provided it to Deborah, and that's straight out of our accounting system. So I'm not sure about this. I can't, you know, answer that. But at least for the other spreadsheet, I can explain, you know, as projects end or services are complete, we would close out the project, the contract in the system. So that was what was asked of us. Every con, every active contract under $100,000, that's what the city had provided. So that's what that spreadsheet was.
Every active contract?
Yes. So, and that's why it's a little unfair to compare to prior years, because obviously contracts from prior years are probably, majority of them are closed, because those projects are complete. So obviously, way more projects and contracts will be open currently, because typically they're about two-year contracts.
Okay, so how hard is it to get a list of every contract, open or closed, for 2021 and 2020?
I can do it. It'll, I mean, I can, in a day or so, I can go through it and do it. There's no, like, magic, you type in dates or anything. I'll have to pull everything and comb through it, but I can do it.
So you're telling me that closed contracts were not on my first spreadsheet?
Correct.
So that's just going to make the numbers go up?
Yes, it will, but that's every contract. That's not just the contracts the mayor signed. So like we discussed last meeting, there were numerous contracts that were on that list, but the council had approved them because they were purchases for supplies under $100,000.
Okay.
So there's no way for me to separate out council-approved or just mayor-approved in the system. It'll pull every contract based on an amount of money.
Okay.
Councilman Hayes?
Could you give us that list by vendor?
Sure.
That would help out.
Okay, and so you want 2020 through 2022 by vendor? Okay.
So just to clarify, open and active are the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and so something, okay, this is the only difference. My department reaches out to all the other departments. Obviously, contracts are assigned to department heads. So like, my department may have certain contracts that I oversee, and it is my responsibility to alert the contract section of the Finance Department to close out my contract once it's finished. We do try to reach out quarterly to departments to get feedback to say, hey, it looks like this contract's close to expiration or has expired. Are you going to renew? Is it done? Sometimes we're waiting on invoices. So just in the last two weeks, we've closed over 100 contracts, working with departments to clean up stuff. So Deborah, I saw her shake her head, open and active. So open in the system, but necessar, not necessarily active, I guess, because if the project's done and we just haven't been informed to close it, it could, it could mean two different things.
I'm just asking that because it was mentioned that these got added and such, but it just could be, as you're saying, they're closed, so they weren't on that, that part of why they-
Correct. Yeah, so contracts change every day. We get new ones, we're adding to the system, we're closing contracts daily, posting amendments. So it is, there are updates daily.
Council. Mayor?
Yeah, I would just want to add to Councilman Hayes's request, per vendor, but also kind of like what Liz is talking about, per department. Because a lot of things come from the departments, which I'm in charge of the departments, I realize that, but it's department requests. So I think that's going to be very, very important to the vendor plus the department request.
So they just don't, they don't all look like they're coming from-
The mayor's office.
Right.
Because there's a lot of things, you know, as you're running this city, the department heads, all department heads are requesting things. So obviously, under $100,000, I think that's what the council needs to see also on a spreadsheet. The last spreadsheet actually had some department things on it, or at least what it was related to. I don't see this one having that, which I think is very important for the public, but also for the council to see.
Well, the first sheet that we got was not by vendor. Councilman Brand again put it by vendor, and it was a hell of a lot easier to understand, and it gave us a lot more information, as opposed to trying to go through a long list and trying to see-
Right.
By vendor.
I think breaking it up by under $100,000, over $100,000, and as per vendor slash department request would be important under the $100,000. Even over the $100,000.
On that first list, you know, there was one vendor, it, $360,000, under 90. There was another one, almost a million dollars, all 90s. So, I mean, it's, by vendor's a lot easier to understand.
Okay.
So-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Clement, District 4, my first council meeting, so please excuse me. I'd like to just throw my two cents in. I wasn't here for this particular ordinance, but in Louisiana-
Speak a little closer to the mic, please.
In a Louisiana, an Attorney General's opinion is only advisory. It has no force and effect of law whatsoever. And I think your legal team probably knows that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Brand?
So, okay. If, if a department comes to the city administration with a contract, it is the department that's approving the contract?
Departments, we have ver, is that on? We have very few that are citywide. They're largely in the public works field, but some of the consulting agreements, which I think is what you're talking about, are largely by department. So what will happen is the request will be made by the department. The contract will be assigned to the department, and it will largely be with respect to a project within the department. So there will be some vendors who will have multiple contracts, but they will not be in the same department. They will be different scopes across different departments. So I think that's what the mayor is referring to. Yes, ultimately, the mayor will need to approve the contract, regardless of which department it comes from, with the exception of the Police Department. But every other department will go through the mayor's office.
Okay, and the only reason I did this spreadsheet today was to show my colleagues what is emailed to us, that when you go through it, it's a pain to read, and it's a lot easier to look at it on a spreadsheet in this format. So I'm going to have my assistant continue to take the emails that we receive on contracts, put it in this format, and distribute it to them, if that's what they would like.
Council? Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Alice, I have a few questions for you. Some of these AG opinions, how long can they take up to? What's the longest you've ever seen an AG opinion take?
I cannot tell you that. I mean, again, they told me it normally takes 30-plus days. And even though we asked for an expedited review, it just got us to the front of the line. He was very hesitant today to give me a number, I mean, you know, a timeframe. But again, it could take 30-plus days, it could take 30 days, could take two, two months. I can't speak on behalf of the AG. And again, I spoke to the Assistant Attorney General, who is actually writing the opinion on behalf of the AG, and he couldn't give me an estimate. He refused to give me an estimate, let's give it that way.
Have you ever seen them take up to six months?
I, this would be my first time dealing with an Attorney General opinion and requesting one. I work for the AG's office. I didn't deal with the opinions on the other side of it, but this would be my first time requesting an opinion on behalf of the City of Kenner, so I have nothing to compare it to.
Okay, and I was hoping you'd have that answer, but, because I just, I guess it's more rumor than anything. I've heard it could take up to six months, some instances.
Again, they said it could take 30, their average normal time, I was told, was 30 to 45 days. And that's non-expedited review, but who knows? I don't think it'll take six.
Yeah, Mr. Clement just came up to the podium a minute ago, and he made a statement saying that, he says the AG opinion's advisory.
That is correct. I agree with that. It's not, it's not law like case law, but it can be used, and I've used it, let's just put it this way. It's guidance to a judge.
Okay, so it would-
It's not law, but it's guidance, and it's used to help as persuasive law.
It's guidance for-
For a judge, if there was some-
Governmental bodies, and it's also guidance for courtrooms.
That is correct. So if somebody challenged something, they can use the Attorney General opinion against the City of Kenner. Whether a judge does anything about that, that's up to a judge.
Did you submit both issues in this matter, dealing?
Yes, yes, I can definitely give you all a copy of the letter. Both issues are asked in, within the Attorney General opinion. A copy of the charter was submitted, a copy of the proposed legislation, as well as the backups for the rule, I'm sorry, the Charter, Section 2.09, and the backups that created the $100,000 section of the charter, with the backups to show what happened back in 2012, when that council was presented with creating that, which again, there, if you look at the backups, they actually had $50,000, and it was amended somehow from the floor, and the resolution ended at $100,000. So they, I guess, started with $50,000 originally.
If we could, I'd definitely like to see how it was framed, the questions and so forth.
Of course, I will submit that to you today.
Give us all copies, that would be great.
Of course, I'll do that. Yes, sir.
And then-
And also the response back from the AG as well.
Absolutely, yes, yes, especially if you get that.
Yes, sir.
That's very important.
As soon as we're done with this meeting, yes.
Right, and I have another question. This is going to be one I'm not sure. So I'm hoping that you might have some guidance on this one. Dealing with the AG opinion, it may be, you might have on both the issues, the enforcement thereof, if it's, if it says that this needs to be terminated, can we do a pub, can we include in this, do an amendment, asking for a public referendum? If it's terminated, if this legislation, we pass it? Can we put a clause in here saying it's to be terminated? If the AG comes back with either one of these being a violation of our charter, then in that case, it'll be terminated, and we can do a public, within the amendment, it'll say, do a public referendum to be requested amending the charter. Can we include that as an amendment to this legislation now?
So the legislation as it's written is an ordinance. Myself and Jennifer Hungerman, from the Legal Department, we actually drafted it, because it really should be a resolution, because again, it's not law. You're all just drafting a resolution, saying this is the law we want to take to the people to vote, which is why it's done by resolution. So in the format it's in, it's inconsistent with the way the charter needs to be amended, just getting you all to vote as in a resolution to create the special election for the people. So as it's created, as it's drafted today, even if you added that amendment, it would not cure the defect.
It may not cure the defect if there is a defect, but if there is a defect, that's what I'm saying, it would go to a public referendum. So we can't do that with the way this legislation is postured at this time.
No, it's the wrong vehicle.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. That's all I have, thank you.
You are.
Thank you. Ms. Foshee?
Thank you, sir. If I could just clarify the concept of a $90,000 contract. There are 90,000 caps, and the reason to have a 90,000 cap is it's administrative, you know, bell. Hey, you're about to hit your cap, so if you get close to 90, is when you need to look at bringing it to the council, because you're close to 100. Were you to reduce it to 50, then I think administratively, we would have 40,000 cap contracts, or $45,000, $45,000 cap contracts across the board, regardless of the amount, because that would, again, would be the administrative trigger to bring it to the council. So a $90,000 contract does not mean 90,000 has been spent. You see this more often, I think, in some of the bigger, the supply contracts. You'll have a million-dollar contract, and you'll find that we spend $70,000. That, the concept really is a, is an administrative and accounting mechanism, so that finance will not approve a purchase put in that's approaching the limit that needs to go to the council. So it is not saying every one of these people get 90,000. It is saying this is the most you can spend before you need to go and get legislation to get to the council.
I'd like to ask you a question, Foshee.
Yes, sir.
Since we received this last month, and we got the email, and I guess I'll ask this. We have one listed here for 90,000, and it's for Candace Watkins to provide advice and recovery efforts for disaster.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't she get a salary for the position she-
No, sir.
She doesn't get a salary?
No, sir.
She doesn't get paid?
She's a contractor, yes, sir.
Okay, so she gets paid?
She gets paid.
Is this an additional contract?
This is an additional contract, that's correct.
And we have people that do things that need to be done in other positions because of situations. Why are we, why are we doing this for somebody to provide, yeah, to provide advice, recovery?
Her last position prior to coming here was a disaster recovery specialist with the state. We are dealing with the state in attempt to recover funds. I don't believe, what's the max? Because that, that contract stopped at what? The $90,000 cap, but we spent 13,000.
So this could be up to 90, but that doesn't-
No, sir. It's closed.
And she got 90?
13.
13, that's, okay, that's what I'm asking up to.
Yes, sir, so it's a 90 cap.
Okay.
But 13- So it's a 90 cap, but 13 was spent before it was closed.
Just clarify.
Okay, no problem.
Counselor.
I'm good.
Madam Clerk?
Excuse us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor McKeer?
As I mentioned at the last meeting when this came up, that, you know, I'm not, not against this, this is, this is a good idea to the extent that if we want to lower the dollar amount that the mayor has authority to spend, let's just bring it down to a dollar and let's just not even have professional service contracts. Let's put everything in a bid format and bid it out. Some of these contracts I think Ms. Foshee was just referring to are bid contracts that we put out a item for bid and then when it comes in, it's an annual contract. So we bid out the item, got the lowest price for the item, and then turned it into a contract. Some of the confusion that I'm hearing is we're dealing with the professional service work that is not bid out, it's just awarded out based upon a need, whether it's engineering, it's legal, it's accounting, architectural, whatever, and we just hire an entity through this professional service procedure, which is set up by the state to give the mayor the power to do that. But if we are just buying a service, a service can be just like buying a box. I want a box designed like this, I want a service designed like this, and we put it out for bid. Now we get the best price out of anybody that can provide the service or build that box. They've given us their best price to do that work. So if, if we, if we look at it in that sense that, that is the intent, I believe, to get the best price and the lowest price for a service or, or an item, let's not have professional service contracts at any amount. Let's just turn everything into an actual spec. I want a, I need a law, an engineer to do, to do this work, spec out what you want him to do, what they need to do, and then put it out for bid and let all engineering firms that have an interest put in what they would charge to do that work. Now we're getting a low price offer to do the work, not just relying on a mayor to negotiate that. And I think this is where I'm looking at saying it is the better thing for the city to get the best price, because I'm not saying that 50,000 is a bad number, but remember, that $100,000 that we're looking to go from 100 to 50, before it went to 100, it was open-ended, because state law allowed a mayor to negotiate professional service contracts at an unlimited price per hour, whatever, how much no cap. In 2012, because of the council's concern with the mayor at that time, having a problem spending too much on professional service contracts, came up with the resolution to put out for a referendum to change the Charter language, which allowed the mayor to have unlimited power and set it at, and as we've heard, apparently at a 50,000, but then it was amended to the council to go to 100,000, and then put it out for a referendum so that the public understood what was coming out and what it was designed to do. Take away the unlimited cap of expenditure by a mayor and bring it to 100,000 and say, well, anything below that, he can still do or she can do, but if it's above that, then the council has to at least approve it. So now we're looking at it going, well, we don't like the 100, let's go down to 50. And again, not opposed to that, but it's the vehicle. If the council in 2012 chose to go from unlimited to 100, they went by a vote of a referendum, not a four-person vote of the council. So same thing here, we want to go from 100 to 50, it should not be by a four-person majority vote of the council. It needs to follow the same track that it got to, to get to the 100, a referendum. But like I said, I would love to amend this and say, let's even bring it down to a dollar and eliminate professional service contracts in this. The mayor can have that authority, but if we say every service treated as an item that we want to get the best price for, let's write it up as a spec and put it out on a bid. And then let these professional service providers do what they should do, give us the best price for that service, not just what's negotiated. So I still have a problem, and no offense to the conversations about this is not a problem to go ahead and approve it and wait for an attorney general opinion to tell us right or wrong. And I appreciate the gentleman's concern about saying it's a, attorney general's opinions are not law. We always know that, we've always heard that. Same thing with our city attorney. We have a city attorney, no matter who that is, and we should listen to our city attorney. But again, it's just an opinion, it's not a fact of law. What is law is if we make this concept of doing a service, a purchase, and do it in a bid format, then we get the best price for that service through the bid format. That's what I would prefer to see and suggest that we look forward to do, not try to skirt around going from 100 to 50 and maybe be okay. Let's just eliminate it and get to the bottom of the line. We need the best service price for anything, whether it's a service or something we buy, and do it by a bid and let the low bidder win the contract. So I'm still not in favor of this vehicle, not the concept, the vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to thank Councilman Segura. I mean, that's, that's quite laudable, the situation he's bringing up. But you know, to stick on the subject, we are, we are addressing this right now. That could be something that can be addressed, you know, after we deal with this right now. And as, as opposed to some individuals say, well, let's should go back to the people. I guess I've been here long enough and, longer than anyone else, to know we voted on a 2030 plan and it did not go to the people. It was a four person that voted for it, 20 million, $30 million. So this is, in comparison, nowhere near that, and it did not go to the public. We as a council voted on it. So to say one is more or better or whatever than the other or not legal and that one was, it was determined that it was not required to go to the public for the vote for that 2030 plan. So to me, I'm looking at it in the same sense, that it is a responsibility or authority of the council to be able to vote on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Mr. Brannigan?
Yes, and I'm moving forward with this legislation. I believe it's good government legislation and it is to protect the citizens of Kenner from multiple contracts going to one vendor in a calendar or fiscal year. I would think it would be better to amend my legislation to use fiscal year instead of calendar year. So I do, I would like to amend it for that, but I'm going forward with it with the way it is today, because everyone has opinions and we don't necessarily agree on all of the different opinions.
Counselwoman McKinnon?
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to ask for clarification. Ms. Sala, could, so obviously, there's a, there's a disconnect between what we believe and, and what your recommendation is.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I can't hear you.
Yes, sorry.
Let's take you in.
There's a disconnect between what your opinion is as opposed, and some of our opinions as well. But if, if there is, if this is something that we believe that is important and the administrat, the current administration believes is also something that is important, can they voluntarily bring any contracts to us and to us for approval by ordinance just for full disclosure? I mean, is that something that would be a violation of the Charter? They actually did it without having us to pass an ordinance?
I don't think it's a legal opinion, I think it's up to the administration. If they voluntarily agreed to do something, then it's not like the council telling the mayor to do something if the mayor decides he wants to do something. So I don't think it's a legal opinion if you're asking for a voluntary, or if you're asking for a question if the mayor or the administration voluntarily decides to share more with the council than is required by the Charter. So I don't think it's a legal question, I think it's more of a question in terms of free will on behalf of the mayor and his administration.
Yes. Okay, so would you-
The question's to me now.
Yes.
So let me, let me clear that what you're asking, Councilwoman. Yes, so I've already received an email from Chief Glazer, Mayor-elect, asking for that to, in one of, you've CC'd on that, so you saw that. So yes, that is going to happen. I have a meeting with his point person tomorrow, I'll let him share that later, I'm not going to share his business, his point person tomorrow afternoon, and that is one of the things that we're going to talk about, which will not be a problem. So yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, I have a request by Councilmember Brannigan to amend the legislation to change calendar, route the legislation to fiscal. Do I have a second? I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, councilmembers, please vote on the amendment. Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brannigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yes.
Wilmot?
Yea.
Carroll?
Yea.
Motion passes 7-0 to amend. Back to your original motion as amended.
Wilmot? Thank you. I just want to, just clarification, I know last, at the last meeting, I made my desires known on this legislation and I just want to reiterate, just touch base on them. This is before us now. We have to make a decision now. That's the way it appears. I know Councilman Brannigan wants to go forward with it, I understand it. So I, I agree, we need to do it now. This is good government legislation, in my opinion, and it also, it provides transparency. That way, contracts that are above $50,000 have to come before the council and it's more transparent to the public. As it is right now, it's $100,000. So that, that limits, we think, is high, it needs to come down. So clearly, it's in the best interest of this city and the citizens of Kenner, and therefore I will be supporting this legislation. Thank you.
Counselwoman McKinnon?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I do want to ask one additional question to Mayor-elect Glazer. Chief Glazer, do you believe, I know Mayor Zahn referenced the letter, do you have any issues with complying with this 50,000 in the future going forward?
No, not at all, but I guess the question is still unanswered if it's the right way to get to the, you know, the ultimate goal. So that's the only thing, you know, these attorney general's opinions, they do, even if you expedite them, it's going to take probably more than one month, probably several months, because we do it with the retirement board, you know, not often, but frequent, you know. We get it and it does, even if you expedite them. But it's a legal opinion, you can go about passing this. If somebody in a resident files suit against it, it's going to end up in front of a judge to make an alternate, ultimate decision on it. So, but no, it's the, the concept of it, I agree with, you know, whether it's legal at the end of the day is going to have to be determined.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Yes, sir. Counselor Segura?
Oh, okay, so let me just clear. City attorney, at this point, you've given your opinion that this is not the right vehicle to do this, is that correct?
That is correct.
As city attorney. You've asked for an attorney general's opinion, which we know could take 30 days, somewhere 40 days, let's say, and to come back with. Chief, Mayor-elect, chief, as you the one right now have to enforce the Charter the way it's read, caught a little bit of weakness there that said you're not sure if this vehicle is the right way to go about changing it because of the Charter, I presume. So with that, I don't see the rush to move forward for something that the mayor has just acknowledged to your question, that he will present every contract to us in this interim that he's still mayor, until, or until we get an attorney general's opinion to say that this was legal, then it could be passed. So if we pass it, it's not just a clean thing, because chief also said it, and I agree. Some resident could say, I want to challenge this, just like it was mentioned a previous referendum that set up a change in the Charter and then was challenged, and then the city lost it in court. But the city had to spend a lot of money on attorney fees, both at the present time to put it out for a vote of the public and then to defend it and then have to deal with the ramifications of the court saying it's wrong. I just don't see this rush for right now, because you asked a question, he gave you an answer, I, he's on record saying he's going to give every contract to us.
Counselman Segura, can I just also add to that? I've already responded to the chief in writing on what you're saying, which Councilman McKinnon also asked. I'm on record here, plus I've also responded to the, to the chief, Mayor-elect Glazer, on that same issue. So just, I'm already on record twice.
Well, let me just, for the sake of, on the record, chief, is that correct? He responded to you in writing that that request?
He may have, I didn't, I didn't see it yet. It's by, it's by email, but he's, he's made it verbally today, so.
Okay, well, I, 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 that's my point, I think-
There was a few requests, as you all saw, you all CC'd, there was a few requests on-
No, I didn't, I wasn't CC'd on that, it's not unusual, but okay.
Okay. I thought you CC'd the council. I'm pretty sure we CC'd the council, but-
Yes, sir. The whole council was sent.
Yeah, right. And I did respond, and I'm pretty sure we CC'd the council when I responded. So I responded to the, I just got to check with the checker back here.
Tom, do you agree?
I'm just making sure. I don't literally send the email out, so.
Okay, I'm right, I did not get it.
We apologize. We apologize, but just so, that's why I want to say, I responded to Councilman McKinnon here, responded to the chief before that, and he had a few questions, so I said yes to everything.
Okay, just make it clear, I did not get it. Whatever. Okay, just let me just clear this up and wrap this up. Why are we rushing to pass something that has no merit if we already have between the current mayor, the mayor-elect, the chief who supports the Charter, that it's kind of problematic, so let's just trust the mayor? He said, said he's going to send us every contract effective immediately through the end of his term, then the new mayor and the new council can deal with whatever they want to do then. By that time, we'll have the attorney general's opinion and say whether this is good or bad as far as state law goes or contrary to what the law provides the mayor's power. And then in the meantime, I'm going to work on a legislation to bring this down to a bid process and get it before us, before the next couple of meetings. So why rush through this and potentially put the city at liability for a lawsuit when it has no bearing if we're going to see the contract for Mayor Zahn? Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Segura? Bless you. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
No.
Councilman McKenny?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Nay.
Motion passes 5-2. Councilmembers Brennan and Segura are opposed. Item 12B is summary ordinance number 12,961, an ordinance excepting the transfer of ownership of portions of state roads, LA 48, Reverend Richard Wilson Drive, and LA 49, Williams Boulevard, located within the City of Kenner from the state of Louisiana to the City of Kenner. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Any discussion? Any discussion? On item 12A, any discussion?
What we're going to do it?
12B. 12B. Yeah.
This is...
12B.
This is the open discussion or defer? Indefinitely defer.
Indefinitely defer. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to indefinitely defer. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think we're on 12B, correct?
Correct.
Right.
You said 12A, Madam Clerk. We're on 12B.
Yes, I said, okay, we're on 12B. Yes. 12B.
Motion is to indef...
Is it? I thought she was just reading it to get it on the floor.
Well, that's, I'm asking that question, so we need to do that, then make the motion. Pardon me, I crossed the proverb.
No, it's okay. It's on the floor. Do I have a motion to indefinitely defer?
For the reference?
Yes.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, you did not say a motion to indefinitely defer.
No, I just said, I put it on the floor. Do I have a motion to indefinitely defer? Is that...
Yes, that's most...
Okay.
Okay.
I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to indefinitely defer.
Council President?
Any discussion on the indefinite deferral?
Mayor?
Thank you. If you'd just give us a brief... I had a discussion with Chief Glazer right before this. I understand, you know, his request to do this through the council, but if you just give us to go, you know, give a presentation on what this will do and why we did it, because it will jeopardize, potentially jeopardize, the funding of the fire station and part of the flyover. So if you would give us a few moments just to give that presentation?
Your motion on the floor right now is to indefinitely defer, so we would either have to put it on the floor for approval, remove your motion to indefinitely defer, then you can have discussion, or we would have to vote on the indefinite deferral.
Wouldn't this discussion count as not to go for the deferral?
No, that's a discussion for appro, like, to discuss the item. Right now, your motion on the floor is to indefinitely defer. If you want to remove that to allow the discussion?
Since your motion, you wish...
As long as we can remove it, I want to hear what the mayor and the director has to say, and then I will go forward with the indefinitely, because we kind of got ahead of ourselves a little bit.
You want to remove your motion to indefinitely defer?
Remove the motion, and then hear the discussion, and then put it back on.
Councilman Brennan, you want to remove your second?
Yes.
Okay, so now I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Brennan for approval. Now we can entertain discussion.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yeah, Council President, not, it hasn't been a whole lot of discussion about this, but this ordinance is to transfer ownership of Williams Boulevard from 32nd to Vantage, and also Reverend Richard Wilson from parish, from the parish limits on the east to the parish limits on west. The amount of the transfer is 4.3 million, and 1.5 million of that is dedicated to go to our share of the interchange cost. Now, the city does have a share in that. I don't know if y'all aware of that. The other part is dedicated to go to the fire station. If this is not passed, if we don't do this, then as far as we know, there will be no funding for the fire station. We will also not have, fulfill our obligation for the match portion of the interchange. Yeah, this is something we, we've worked with DOTD for, it's been in the works for years, and we had, we had to work with the lang, we had to develop the language of this so that it would be acceptable to both parties, and we've finally done that, and this, that's what this does. So I don't know if y'all aware of that, but that's the purpose of the money, so that, you know, again, we can build the station. Where we are with the station right now is that we've had permit drawings have been submitted to code. They're in there right now. We have a C-MAR contractor in place. If the permits, the comments on the permit drawings are addressed, we would be able to go to construction within a month. Anyway, that's where we are right now. Everything's in place. The only thing, I mean, this is obviously pending, and the other thing is pending is if Gibbs, who is the C-MAR contractor, gives us an acceptable price.
Tom, explain C-MAR, please.
It's, C-MAR stands for Construction Manager at Risk. It's something that the state allows us to do where a contractor gets involved with the design of the project early on, and they work with the design team and offer a lot of suggestions that usually leads to a more affordable project. They've done that. I've been in all the meetings with them. They've done an excellent job. So that contractor being so familiar with the project would be in a good position to give us our best price, and also it saves time. And so if we don't accept the C-MAR, the C-MAR bid, or the GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price, we would have to advertise and bid and go through that process, which I think y'all are familiar with that. It would take, what, three months to get that in place? Y'all have any questions?
What did you say, Mr. Schreiner, about the permits and the fire station?
It's what, they have to get their drawings approved, it's a building, it has to go to code. They do their normal review like they would for any building that's going to be constructed. Also, there is a concern, Fire Chief has a concern, and I'll let him address that, has to do his PIL rating.
But did you say something about the permits at the project beginning? Give a time on it?
Yeah, the permit drawings have been submitted to code. They're in there right now, so. And, you know, once they'll provide comments, the design team will revise drawings if necessary, come back with a revised set of plans. We don't expect a lot of provisions to be made. So essentially, what we're saying is we're ready to go, ready to go build a project.
But did you say a timeframe when it began?
We could, we could begin, once we get the revisions made and submitted back to code, we could go to construction in a month.
Thank you. Councilwoman, do you have any questions, Mr. Schreiner?
Yes, I do. Not from Mr. Schreiner.
Do you have questions, Mr. Schreiner?
Well, I did, but I didn't know if they're just kind of doing a rotation and he's coming back, what? He was yielding to the Fire Chief. I didn't know if he was not, he was finishing.
If you have questions for Mr. Schreiner, why don't we address those, please?
You referred to C-MAR, and you gave a, it's an acronym, I guess, and you gave the explanation. I'm somewhat familiar with it, but as I appreciate, is this something that the state is more pushing on to follow to do this? Because they already started their construction under a C-MAR, as I appreciate, but flyover.
Yeah, they were totally in support of this project. Yeah, they like it. They see a big benefit in having the contractor involved with the design. I mean, there's a lot of things they have pointed out on our project where they, you know, we have shaved a lot of costs off the project.
So the design of the fire station, which we know, we've been questioned as to where it's at and what's going on, has been more of the C-MAR process of the design taking place, which is now, you say, complete and has been turned over to code?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So if that's complete and in code, we're just hopefully waiting for them to cross Ts, dot DIs, make any minor changes, then it comes back, and then the contractor is already in place to start work?
Right, he's there. He's ready to go. They're, they understand their role. They're understanding, their role is to help us along with the project, offer all these suggestions that they have, and, you know, if they give us a bid that we think we can accept, then, you know, we sign the contract with them, which has already been developed, and we can go to work.
Okay. All right, thank you.
How much of this money would we receive flyover, and how much for the fire?
Well, it's a total amount of 4.3 billion. 1.5 million would be our share for the interchange project. The rest would go to the fire station.
Chairman, Councilman Brannigan has his hand up. I just didn't know if you saw him. I just want to make sure you knew.
Don't we have the money for the fire station? Haven't we had?
We don't, we don't have all the money. We went through this process getting the old station evaluated, and using their criteria, they, we didn't get enough money for the station. The DOTD recognized this, and often, that's one of the reasons they offered this plan for us to get additional money.
But we don't have the money for the fire station unless we move...
Let me say this. We have all the money for the fire station with this project in place.
But we didn't know about this project.
Yeah, you'd... No, no, no. No, we...
I mean...
But yeah.
What?
You didn't know? The council didn't know?
No, I'm asking a question. I mean, we knew this money was coming at some...
This is part of the negotiations with DOTD from the very, well, not from the very beginning, but as we went along to the time that it took to get to this point.
So this isn't just something that's...
No. This is not new.
No, this isn't.
That's what we...
I'm trying to clarify, so everybody on...
Okay. No, but I don't want you to think that we didn't have the money. We did have the money with this project. Okay.
I'm just trying to...
No, and I'm just trying to answer it. I think we're on the same page.
Yes. So what was the original, so when we discussed the fire station, it was my understanding that it was, we got like 4.3 million for the fire station. Is that correct?
No, we got, well, I don't, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but they gave us money, they gave us money for the land, they gave us money for the construction of the, of the station, they gave us money for relocation, and they gave us money for rental, if we had to rent something for, I think it was six months. So that, that all went into that figure.
Okay, so, okay, so we got that money, and are we building it bigger, or why do we need more money? And this is the first time I've heard about this, that we're, that we were negotiating a transfer or anything. I mean, because my concern is, is that now we're going to have to maintain, you know, we're adding to the inventory of our street maintenance, which right now is okay, but not great. So we don't want to, it's going to cost, in the long term, it's going to cost the city more money because we didn't get enough money initially, but then we did get enough money initially. I'm just really confused, because I feel like I was told, we were told something, and then we were told something, and now we're being told something different, so I just want to make sure that I understand.
Well, remember, 1.5 million goes to the match for the interchange project.
Right.
The other thing...
So we're getting state money to match state money? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
That makes sense.
The other thing that they, yeah, you say we're getting the roads that'll be now maintained by the city if this is passed, that they, they don't just hand up, hand you the roads as, in the condition that they are today. They'll bring them up to speed, they'll do a complete mill and overlay, they'll address other things like handicap access, all those things to get it up to their standards. So, so we have that, so they're going to leave us...
Right, but the long-term maintenance would be our responsibility.
Correct.
Councilman Brannigan?
Okay. You said that we had the money to build the fire station. That's what you just said, okay? So if we had the money to build the fire station, why are we bringing this in? The problem that I have with taking these roads over is we can't maintain the roads that we have now. And if we take over Williams Boulevard and Reverend Richard Wilson Drive, that's going to add to the burden for the city to maintain those streets forever. I mean, this is not something that's going to go away. So did I hear you say that we had the money to build the fire station?
Money came to us from the DOTD's evaluation...
How much money was that?
I don't have the number in front of me, but it's, this money is needed to complete the cost. The other thing that's happened is that when we purchased the land, it was, it was in excess of what was allowed by DOTD. The other thing that their evaluation did not do is it not take into, they did not take into account professional fees, you know, which is a big mistake in my book, that how do you build anything like this? How do you build a fire station without having it designed? So that's another cost that has to be accounted for.
Excuse me. So again, we had the money. Do we know how much money we have? Somebody's got to be able to tell us.
We received 3.46 million. Of that, 1.5 went to purchase the new land where the fire station will be built, so we have 1.9 left.
And we think the cost is going to be...
Tom might have the total.
I think with this addition, we'll be, we'll be in good shape.
I think from the start, we knew that the 1.9 would not be enough, so they continued to negotiate with them to give us additional funding. So we know that we don't have enough with the 1.9.
And what's the projected cost for the new fire station?
I think, I think it's 3.5 million. I don't have that in front of me, but...
Anyone know that?
Council Chairman, we didn't know about this until I got a call from the advocate, so we didn't hear from anybody, but we can have a presentation for you for the next council meeting. They'll break all this down. I didn't...
Didn't know what? Sorry.
That this was going to be indefinitely deferred, until I got a phone call from the advocate. They didn't use that word, a term, but what I'm saying is, we're not prepared to give you all those numbers right now, because we didn't know where the council was going with this.
Regardless of the deferral, we don't know what the cost of the fire station is?
Well, we don't want to give you a number that may be incorrect. We want to give you the exact numbers.
So we don't know the number for the fire station?
It's not that we don't know it, we don't have it for you right now. We do know it, but we don't have it to supply to you right now, to provide to you.
Nobody knows what the cost of the fire station is, even though it's not...
You can give, if you want to give a rough estimate, but we'll make it very clear, a rough estimate. I'm not, I don't want to give...
I believe it's 3.5 million. Yeah, like, you know, like the mayor said, we weren't prepared to talk about that, so I don't, I could easily...
Whether prepared or not, I can't imagine that we don't know what the cost of a fire station is going to be. It's not like we're buying a pickup truck. This is just, I'm just amazed.
If I may add, we haven't bid out the actual construction, and construction costs are going up, so it's hard for us to give you just a concrete number. I would agree, the 3.5 is a good estimate on what we projected, so as soon as we get the quote, we would have a better...
And again, all along, we've been relying on the possibility of getting this money for the flyover and, and the fire station, and we went ahead with the fire station and what we've done?
Yeah, where, we...
The answer, you...
It's part, it's part of the negotiations with DOTD. Yes.
Yeah, all along, we knew we were going to have to do this to get the balance...
I don't see the issue as part of the negotiations with DOTD.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, Director. So I think, I think we believe it was said that we got 3.6 million for the sale of the old fire station and from the state and all that. I think that's a, finance, 3.4, excuse me, 3.4 million. So, you know, I'm only saying this for the sake of our conversation, and the fact that it is in District 1, that the fire station, you know, will eventually be built, that I never supported that purchase in the land in the beginning, because I thought it was kind of excessive. But with that money alone, and the fact that we had property where we could have built it that we owned already, and I know, I know I'm bringing this up, but I think it's important to put that out there, that we had the property to build this, so all of that 3.4, based on the numbers, without the cost going up for the hurricane, we didn't know that, would have been pretty much enough to cover the, cover that. So I'm just saying, if anything, you know, my deferral indefinitely, I haven't been, I haven't been convinced that I should change that right now.
Brown?
I haven't been convinced that we should not indefinitely defer this, and if this is the case, then we can, we can revisit it another time, but for right now, I haven't[1719.53] But for right now, I haven't been convinced that I should not, if the members do not want to support it. Obviously, that's their, you know, opinion, but based on what I just shared about the cost and where we could have done it and this and that. And don't we have a milage in place for the fire that we passed last year?
Say again, please.
Is there a milage in place for the fire that we're going to be receiving funding for?
I think the chief can address that.
Yeah, but I guess, do we have a milage in place to support the fire?
Yeah, we have a... We just renewed 7.13 mills, I think, for fire-related services at the time. My issue with the fire station, the current condition is, in 2019, when we got the Class 1 rating, we get a rating every five years, which comes up again in 2024. The beginning of 2024 is when PL would come in and start to rate, you know, again, the fire service as it relates to the protection for the community. With us not having a fire station at that location would tremendously harm the ability of us to maintain that Class 1 rating.
Without a doubt. We need a fire station, without a doubt, but I'm saying the milage...
And besides the guys in the trailer for... As long as I want them to be in there.
Yeah, we need the fire station. Nobody's doubting that at all. There are some other things we may disagree on, but there's no doubt a fire station is needed for the Veteran Heights in the Susan Park area, without a doubt. The milage that we have, that's in place, will be able to support fire-related...
No.
It won't?
Well, the milage... And I don't want to have that conversation tonight. I don't think that's a conversation for the night.
Could it support building a fire station, the funding from that milage?
No, the mills, seven mills only is like $3.5 million.
No, could it support, though? I'm just asking.
No.
Could any of the funds be used to support building that fire station?
Not the current milage, no.
If I may, just for clarity, the total operating expenses for the fire department is a little over 11 million, and we only have dedicated revenue of 5.7. So, the difference comes from the general fund. So, if we take any money away that's dedicated, we would have to find the funding somewhere else, just to help.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. I wasn't suggesting. I just was just asking, could it be? But again, you know, we haven't... Oh, I haven't heard, haven't seen any of the diagrams, even initial diagrams of the fire station of what it might initially cost before the cost went up. So, we weren't aware of that. We were just under the impression that there were enough funding to build it. So, now, obviously, it being said that we need this additional funding to support that and plus also for the flyover. So, again, I have not heard enough yet to pull back my indefinitely deferral of it. It's going to be... I'm going to put it up. It's going to be voted on or not voted on, and then we move forward on doing what we have to do for the fire station and the flyover. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council. Councilwoman Womack?
Thank you. Hearing this is... I served nine years in our state's legislature. Doing that, a part of Williams Boulevard, Jefferson Highway, those were my representative areas. Back in 2011, we had, I believe it was 2011, maybe I'm off a year. We had the roadways resurfaced back then, ruts, potholes, all those things. And the state came in, and I sent in tons of complaints on a regular basis for a couple of years. And eventually, the state got tired of hearing it, and they came in and resurfaced everything. That was wonderful, 2011. So, what are we at now? We're not far from that, and then looking to resurface it again. Every time it's resurfaced, it's not a few hundred thousand. We're talking well over a million every time, and the price keeps going up and up and up. The state doesn't just maintain the roadways either. You got traffic engineers. Every time a sign is changed, a street light is changed, or any of those things, they pull in the top people who have the engineering background to make a determination whether or not something should be changed. That's important. You got to have that, whether a stop sign, a street light, or no-left-turn sign in order to avoid all these accidents that could take place, right? In addition to that, who gets sued? The people who maintain the roads. That's another big issue. So, you got liability you're dealing with as well. So, you got the roads. You have all the street lights, street maintenance. Every time we got high winds, what happens? The street lights go out. Potential for accidents, right? If it doesn't get reported and handled right away, who gets sued? All these things come into play. We're talking millions of dollars on a regular basis. I'm talking just for the resurfacing part of it. In between, they have millions of dollars every time it gets resurfaced. This is a huge undertaking. I don't know who negotiated this 4.3, but that's grossly low. And I wouldn't even do it if it was 20. I think 20 million is low. This is insane. We're talking about the two biggest roadways in Kenner. We're talking about Williams Boulevard, roughly half of it, and we're talking about all of Jefferson Highway. That's huge. That road surface is just incredible, and we're going to take that over? There's something wrong with that. I have a huge, huge problem with this, and I'm going to support the indefinite deferral on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Councilman Brandon?
Okay, Ms. Herring. We have how much money left to build the station, 1.9?
1.9 was left after the initial state...
And that's collecting all of the money from the state that they were through the Firehouse move and all of that stuff?
Yes, sir.
Not this stuff?
Not this deal.
Okay. Okay. All right, that's all I need.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to indefinitely defer. Mr. Chairman?
We've already closed it, Alessandro. Sorry? No, I didn't hear what you said. I didn't hear what you... No, no, no. Come on up. You have three seconds. No.
Thank you very much, Council President Stacey Alessandro, 4th District. Okay, so when y'all... When this came on the agenda to buy these roads, I was like, why are we even doing this? Now it is crystal clear why. We don't have the money to do the two biggest projects happening in Kenner right now. Now, number one, are you meaning to tell me that we started the flyover project without our match in place? Like, they went ahead with the construction, and we didn't even have money for our part of it? Okay, we need to look into that because I'm not buying that. And number two, they gave us enough money for that fire station. Y'all bought a piece of land that the man is assessed 225,000 a year on, and y'all paid $1 million and a half for that. And then there's $400,000 more for utility work. Y'all paid $2 million for the land. And y'all told us... I'm so upset right now. I don't even know where to start. Y'all told us multiple times that y'all were about to break ground on that station. Ms. Fosha, you told us that a council meeting was going to be last October, and now y'all are telling us you don't even know how much it's going to cost? Y'all kept telling us, oh, we're breaking ground. We're breaking ground. Y'all got that money three and a half years ago, and they gave you money for everything. And just because you spent half of it on buying a piece of property that wasn't even worth a third of what you paid for it, and now we don't have the money for that either? Have we been lied to all this time? We're breaking ground. We're breaking ground. Now, we don't even know how much money we have, how much it's going to cost? And then negotiate... Y'all knew in the beginning that that wasn't enough, so you're negotiating for more? When did that ever come up? I hope that's documented with the governor's office, that they didn't give us enough in the beginning, and we knew it? And as far as us losing our Class 1 fire rating, what's changing? Because we were on the verge of losing our 2 all this time, and then suddenly, we lose the fire station. You don't replace it, and we go to a Class 1. We've held on to that for what, three years now? And now, all of a sudden, the scare tactic, if y'all don't vote on this, we don't have the fire station, we're going to lose our fire rating? What's changed? Why all of a sudden now? I call for you guys to call in the legislative auditor to look into this fire station fiasco. This is not okay. This has been going on for over three years. Are y'all going to do any... I'm sorry. I like and respect all y'all up there, but y'all are the people who can do something. And as a citizen of this city, I am begging you to do something. This is not okay. Please. I know I didn't do a good job right now. I'm just so upset, but I think y'all understand where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Councilman Brandon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Richard Brown, I live in District 4 in Kenner. I came here from home. I was listening to the meeting as I was getting ready to go and serve as parliamentarian at a convention tomorrow morning. What I'm hearing has me outraged. First off, Stacey Alessandro was right. We paid way too much money for that piece of land for the fire station. Citizens for Better Kenner tried. We tried our best to get the city to not pay that much money for that land. We tried hard. Secondly, we were assured over and over, repeatedly, repeatedly, by the mayor in statements here and public relations releases, that the fire station is totally, completely paid for. It's not going to cost the citizens of Kenner a dime. That between the money coming from the state and money coming from the federal government that we were promised, it was not going to cost us a dime. It was fully paid for. Everything was fully paid for. It looks like now that's so much BS. As far as this particular deal to sell these streets, I agree with Mr. Womack. $4.5 million for maintenance forever from now on is nowhere near enough. Second, I actually looked at the paperwork for this. $1.5 million of that is supposed to go toward the interchange with Loyola and I-10. So, that leaves $3 million for maintenance for these roads we're taking over. But the proposal doesn't say anything about that money being for the fire station. The paperwork that goes with this ordinance says it is for deferred maintenance. It's for maintenance for those roads, for the state to pay the city of Kenner to maintain them. Now, you want to take that money to go to the fire station? This is outrageous. It's just outrageous. I can't say it any better. At a minimum, this needs to be deferred to be talked about more, and I think it needs to be deferred indefinitely and just put to rest and buried. There's something terribly wrong based on what we were told three years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 5th District, 50 years. I agree with the... Because it was just up here, Mr. Brown, I'm outraged as well. I was outraged from the very first day when this whole thing unfolded. I put a question to the then-city attorney, and he couldn't answer. And I asked him, if you... It was a hypothetical question. If you was purchasing this property, five properties, for yourself, would you have ignored the three appraisals that was on the table and the assessments that came in from the assessors' office and paid $1.5 million for that property? He couldn't answer. Of course, he couldn't answer because it wasn't his money. Now, here we are, three years later. This thing is still going on. It's an outrage. It's an embarrassment to the city of Kenner. And I can tell you something right now. There needs to be... There needs to be some type of investigation into this and find out what happened to that money. And I'm going to tell you something else. That 2030 plan, that's $37 million in bond debt that I oppose. The $80 million for the sewer system in this city, 80 million more in bond debt. Only to be told now that the sewer system is in deplorable condition. Where's the $80 million? Where's the $37 million for the 2030 plan? And the mayor of that said he's going to restart it. Well, what happened to the $30 million in debt we incurred? That's all we got to show is debt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morella.
Sayley Molina, District 5. I just want to agree with the indefinite deferral. I don't agree with taking on the responsibility of these two major roads when we're not doing a good job of meeting the responsibilities that are already on our table. One of the things that I want to bring to light is that it doesn't seem, and I don't know who's responsible, or, you know, where the... I don't know how it works, to who is responsible for getting the council the information that you guys need to make informed decisions that affect us? Because with the Duncan Canal, we learned so many things that you guys did not know, and as well as with the flyover. Now, with the fire station, y'all are just learning things, and y'all should be the people that I assume have access to the most information with no red tape to get through. I remember back three years ago during the purchase of the fire station land, it was time is of the essence. And now I hear that we don't even have a plan for a fire station. We don't have enough money. We spent most of the money on the land. Now, we don't have enough for the building. And it's like we're making such... Where, you know, I look up and admire each and every one of you guys as professionals and to see, from my point of view, such irresponsible financial decisions being made and things that just don't make sense to a layperson, that I would like for you guys to take the time to look and to ask. Yesterday, or Tuesday, we learned about a project that's going to start, supposedly going to start on yesterday, that is going to affect the bridge between West Loyola and Yo Yeni. But there was no information. There's no announcement from the DOTD. There's no warning that the street is going to be closed, other than our little municipal warning. Our councilman doesn't have plans that should have been provided to him or engineers report. And it's the same thing going to happen with that project as the Duncan Canal, as the flyover, as the fire station. You know, it's not just one thing. Now, it's a bunch of things. So, you know, what are we going to do differently to make sure that our council people have all of the documents, information, contracts, access to vendors that they need in order to make a decision while representing the public? That's a question. But that's it. That's all I have for you.
Thank you for your comments, but I will comment on this. So, the DOTD project, speaking of... Letters were mailed out to the West Loyola, all the residents on West Loyola, Woodlake, East Park, Los Montes Train. The letters were mailed out, first notified of the project. I have been reaching out to everyone that I have text messages for. It's been posted. I was not going to go through the expense of... I forget how many letters it was. It was quite a few to tell people it was supposed to be starting the other day. They obviously have not closed Yo Yeni yet. The signs are all in place, and they're covered. Which I know you don't know what's behind the sign, if it's covered. I understand that. But I would anticipate, my understanding is, that the disclosure is imminent at any time. There's construction stuff out there. There are people out there in the morning, the workers. You can tell they're lining things up. It's still open at this time, but that's subject to changes. I don't know if it'll be tomorrow, if it'll be Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, but it's certainly...
Right, but my concern isn't, are people being notified? Okay, they're notified, but they're notified that work is starting, but are you notified? Are we notified of what work? Is it the same contractor that is doing the Duncan Canal? Are we going to run into the same problems? Are the engineers...
I was given... We were provided that information.
Okay.
We know who the contractor is. They're also awarded another product, project, pardon me, at Jefferson Parish by the DOTD, which is not in Kenner at all. Some things happen. Some of that, I mean, not to be funny, some of it, that's not relevant to notifying, in my eyes, the constituents, the time, the date, and the issues. KFD was notified right away. The chief of police, KPD, all the entities were notified as soon as we were made aware of it. And we've had ongoing conversations about that as well. The administration has been aware of it. Those conversations have been... And even when we got the update the other day, the email from the DOTD, that was all sent again to make certain that the department that need to know, the RTA is notified, Ivy Waste is notified, ambulance services have been notified. So, there's... And again, not just because of the expense, the letter was not going to go to everyone in District 4.
Understood. Well, just for clarity, I'm not in favor of taking on the burden of these two extra roads.
Well, then you have 10 minutes, Mr. Morella.
Councilman Brandon, you made the announcement in this chamber concerning the West Loyola Bridge two meetings ago. And you and I had a little discussion in here on the record, right in here. And I asked you to notify DOTD and find out what the plans was for the East Loyola Bridge with the live gas line that runs parallel to it. You made the announcement. We talked about it right here on the record. People want... If they don't look at the replay, come on down.
Well, if they listen closely enough, then hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Council Chairman?
I'm sorry?
May I? Can she clarify a few emails that go back a little bit?
Yes.
And this is the best research I can do on my iPhone. I'm sure when I get the computer tomorrow, I can give you guys more details. But the earliest reference I see to this transaction is November 16, 2018. State Representative Stagni was our advocate in terms of negotiating with the Department of Transportation Development. We had multiple trips to Baton Rouge. We had multiple trips to Baton Rouge. Uh, we met with, uh, the Secretary Sean Wilson, multiple trips here. Uh, he was involved.
Is this in regard to?
I'm sorry, the fire station?
Okay. I just wanted, I, I thought so.
I apologize. Um, yes, sir. In regard to the fire station. And it was clear the whole time we were having this discussion that there was insufficient funds being offered by the state and based upon the information that they, their criteria by which they're using federal highway administration funds. And when you use federal highway administration funds, you have specific criteria that they're limited to. So, uh, Representative Stagni was, uh, took lead in trying to help us find other funds. And he, uh, spoke with Sean Wilson, the Secretary of DOTD. And when the email that I have, because he was communicating through Ed Rapiere, is from Ed Rapiere, the then deputy city attorney, to Representative Stagni, and reads, Joe, don't forget to send me the emails from Sean, meaning Sean Wilson, on the idea of them paying us to take streets so that I can follow up. And that's in reference to the fire, Kenner Fire Station is the caption. And then the most recent, um, the, the document that you have in front of you, uh, was initially drafted by, again, Mr. Rapiere, who negotiated, I want to say, very hard and very well for the many years that we were trying to get this project off the ground. And on July 6, 2021, uh, his email is, here's the initial CEA. You have the final in front of you. In it, Kenner received 3.4, 3.4, I'm sorry, the initial CEA being the, the, the initial payment from the DOTD. Uh, here is the initial CEA in it, Kenner received 3.464 million. In the road transfer, Kenner will receive an additional 3.811. 1.5 will be used for Kenner's matching fund, which leaves an additional 2.3 to go toward the fire station. This translates into Kenner receiving a total of 5.7 cash to replace the fire station and 1.5 credit for its matching funds. Now, out of that amount, obviously, they paid for the land. So, all along, this transaction was part of the funding for the fire station as well as the match. Um, and yes, um, Ms. Alessandra, they did begin without the 1.5 from us. Uh, they, they just basically said, you have to pay 1.5. I'm not sure why we're paying 1.5. So everybody flies over Kenner and never stops here. But nonetheless, that's what we were told was our match, and that's how we were going to pay for it. I will be happy to go back and do further research and bring up all the information I can for you and the various iterations. The majority of this communication was, again, between Mr. Rapiere and Department of Transportation and Development, uh, personnel, Sean Wilson himself, as well as various others who work for him. So I can pull that together and bring that to you, but this is not, uh, new information. This is what, at least since 2018, has been the method by which we knew that we would need to pay for the fire station.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Brennan.
Uh, Madam, uh, Mr. President, I, I would like to ask Madam Clerk to read the caption again because we have, you know, we have gone and talked about many, many, many things. So I want to make sure for the public and everybody know exactly, exactly what we are about to vote on because we've talked about the flyover, we've talked about, you know, the, the fire station and this particular, it's just not relating to any of that, even though it is related to that. So if you can read it again, so we all know exactly what we are about to vote on, I would appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Summary ordinance number 12,961. An ordinance accepting the transfer of ownership of portions of State Roots LA 48, Reverend Richard Wilson Drive, and LA 49, Williams Boulevard, located with the City of Kenner from the state of Louisiana to the City of Kenner. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to indefinitely defer. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yes.
Wilmot?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to indefinitely defer. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution urging support of the Kenner delegation for the Louisiana State Legislature in the Hoopla Out of Bounds Bash to select the Charles T. Junior Basketball Court of the Bertha Lee Jackson Play Lot and the A.P. Clay Center Basketball Court for Restoration. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Carroll would like for me to read, um, some of the wherestes of this resolution for the public to be aware of what we're doing, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
Whereas, beginning in 2009, several state legislatures formed the legislature's charity fund. And whereas, the legislature's charity fund is not for nonprofit org, corporation whose objective is to enhance the lives of the people of Louisiana through charitable works. And whereas, each year proceeds from the fund are used for the Hoopla Out of Bounds Bash to restore community basketball courts in need of refurbishing around the state of Louisiana. Whereas, the Hoopla Out of Bounds Bash features a basketball competition between the representatives from the Senate and the House. Whereas, the House and Senate members are entered into a raffle and the chosen members receives funds to restore the basketball court of his or her choosing. Whereas, the Charles Teague Junior Basketball Court of the Bertha Lee Jackson Play Lot, located at Kenner Avenue and Salvador Road, Kenner, Louisiana 70062, and the A.P. Clay Center Basketball Court, located at 200 Decatur Street, Kenner, Louisiana 70062, are in dire need of repair. Whereas, renovation of the basketball courts will enhance the quality of life.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And, uh, you know, I'd like to first thank, thank all the ladies in the council for supporting, uh, this, this today because it was kind of late that I got this from Representative Stagni because in the past, the, either the mayor or myself has submitted a letter to be able to participate in this. Well, now they are requesting a, uh, you know, ordinance, uh, to get it, to get it done. So without their support, without the support of Attorney Shaw, we, we wouldn't have been able to do it because time was of essence. So thank you, ladies, for supporting this. She read it. The reality is, we've done this in the past when Councilman Wilmot was in the, uh, with our representative. He never won. You know, I've, I've always teased him about that. Never won. Never. Not one time did he win. So hopefully Representative Stagni would do a better job. Now, he participated in the basketball game. I don't know if they won that game or not, but, uh, you know, all jokes aside, thank you for your support and all we can do is submit our name in it. We are now asking the support of the other delegation, uh, our other delegation to support it as well because the more people you have participate, the more your chances go up to win. So if, if they submit as well, uh, hopefully we may win and we may be able to, to revise one of these courts, which is, in essence, for everyone. It may be located in District 1, but it is open for everyone. No difference than the tennis courts or any other playground or gym in the city. So I would like to ask, uh, Councilman Wilmot, just to give a little bit more details about the game or some of the information that he's more privy to, uh, by being in, in the, uh, House of Representatives, if he doesn't mind.
Thank, Councilman? Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Um, yeah, thank you. It was an honor to participate into that event. Uh, the House plays the Senate every year in basketball at the Peak Maryville Center. Um, uh, back then, most of the time, uh, I want to say that the, the Senate actually won. They got the bragging rights, they got the right to take home the trophy, and, uh, it went back and forth, uh, several times, and it still does. Um, the Senate, though, uh, I got to say, they had a couple of players that were, were, uh, out of our caliber, I want to say, and they were very, very good. Um, but, but we do have, uh, today, I understand that things have changed and now the House is starting to take the trophy home more, which is great. Um, but they do, as a result of this, they do have the Legislative Charity Fund. It's a not, not-for-profit organization, and they do make a selection of one court in the state that actually gets, gets renovations. It's a very, very nice project. They do it in, in, in congruent with the, uh, professional basketball team in New Orleans, and it's well done, and, and we hope to win it. The actual participants, I want to say, is, is somewhere between 10 and 20. So that's all. And one of them gets selected every year. We were unfortunate with that. We didn't ever get selected. One of the state reps, his, he had two courts in his district, got redone. So it is a big event and they, they do, um, uh, put up a lot of money for that event. So, uh, hope, hopefully we will get it this year. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. And, you know, I believe it's, it was $50,000 during your tenure with the price of costs going up. Hopefully it has inflated also, but, you know, to be able to spend 50-plus thousand dollars on a court, uh, particularly with the summer coming up, man, this is, this is something fantastic. And, uh, you know, we'll, we'll say a prayer, prayer and keep our fingers crossed that we are, we are fortunate this time.
Thank you, Council.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Uh, Councilman Carroll and Councilwomen, as I'm hearing, and just, I know these competitions take place in, in these different bodies because I know Senator Scalise, I mean, State House Rep Scalise, uh, was playing baseball in one of these types of events when he got, uh, shot. But, uh, just out of curiosity, the members of the House that play, are they chosen or are they volunteers?
Everybody can play.
Oh, okay.
And so it's, it's interesting to see, though, because some people aren't in the shape to play and they try anyway, including myself.
I wasn't talking about you. Uh, but, but my point was, I would want, I was just wondering if we could somehow get, instead of, uh, say Rep Stagni to play, get his son to play. I hear he's much better.
Really?
So then we could have a better chance of, of getting some of that. So if there's a way to make that happen, at least have, recommend that he coach his dad how to play, I guess.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for their support.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenny?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 12,958. An ordinance authorizing repairs to Unit 6050 by Lee Tractor Company Incorporated and authorized dealer in the amount of $13,945.17 for the Department of Fleet Management. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Hayes. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman McKenny?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12,959. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Black Star Diversified Enterprises LLC for the purchase of 500 5 and 1/2 inch flat blade cross with 5 and 1/2 flat blade holders and 512 inch flat blade cross with 12 inch flat blade holders in accordance with letter bid 22-1996 for the sum of $8,000 for the Department of General Services. I have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember Segura. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yay.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 12,960. An ordinance authorizing an agreement with Vessina's Incorporated to provide disaster meal service in accordance with request for proposal number 21-6631. I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember Brennan.
Mr. Morella?
Almorella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 5th District, 50 years. Uh, I want to direct this to you, Liz. Um, what is the amount of this contract? And was this the only responsive bid that we had or was it the lowest bid that we had?
I'll defer to Doug since it's his department.
That's okay.
I can answer that, uh, that we had, uh, three bidders on this and based on the assessments and, uh, review of their logistic plan and their various other factors, uh, they were the best, uh, uh, bid. So they were selected out of three.
Um.
Uh, well, the contract is, is going to be a contingency-based contract, so it's going to be a, a contract that's based on the emergency at the time we're in a declared and then we set the limit at that time based on, uh, the assessment of what our needs are at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Doug. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15D is a resolution approving change order number seven to the agreement with Barriere Construction Company LLC dated November 20, 2017 regarding the New Orleans Airport Connect the Road. State project number H period 011276. Federal aid project number H 011276. Kenner Public Works project number 2014-003-A-RB for a net decrease of $4,911.31 for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Carroll.
Council.
Segura?
Thank you. If Mr. Shrinna can come up and discuss this decrease, so Mr. Morella won't have to ask his question.
I don't have a question. I just got to.
Okay.
Councilman, this is a, an adjustment to the contract price, do they, to change any asphalt price? Is a way that you get adjusted, adjustments to your asphalt based on the price of oil, which is a major component of asphalt. So in, in this case, it's, it's a reduction of almost $5,000. Of that, we get 20%.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the kind of change orders I like. And, uh, good job, uh, Mr. Shrinna. Uh, job well done. Thank you. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance levying the annual tax mileage rates for the year of 2022 totaling 17 and 71 hundredths mils on the dollar of the assessed valuation of all taxable property within the corporate limits of the City of Kenner, Louisiana on the 2022 tax rule. In accordance with state law, please be advised to the public that this will be heard for final adoption in public hearing on Thursday, May 5, 2022, at 5:30 PM. Item 16B is an ordinance authorizing the use of Jefferson Parish Contract Number 55-20083, bid proposal number 50-136407, with thrown-to-go LLC doing businesses event room for the rental of portable toilets on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed $60,000 for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Item 16C is an ordinance accepting the only responsive bid received from Grim Co. Incorporated to supply HP 831 ink for traffic printer as needed in accordance with letter bid number 22-1997 in an amount not to exceed $20,000 for the Department of General Services. Item 16D is an ordinance accepting the only responsive bid received from Pennant Shop Incorporated to supply flags as needed in accordance with letter bid number 22-1998 in an amount not to exceed $20,000 for the Department of General Services. in an amount not to exceed $20,000 for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen E is an ordinance accepting the only responsive bid received from Traffic Commander LLC for the purchase of 100 Type II barricades in accordance with letter bid number 22-1999 in the amount of $5,800 for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen F is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 833 DARE t-shirts, including shipping, at a cost of $5,846.10 from Creative Product Sourcing Incorporated, a sole-source provider for the Kinnor Police Department. Item sixteen G is an ordinance authorizing utilization of Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office Contract 21-DEC-1501 with Lamarck Ford Incorporated, courtesy Ford to purchase vehicles on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for the life of the agreement for the Kinnor Police Department. Item sixteen H is an ordinance amending ordinance number 11,971, adopted March 10, 2022, to replace the wording "or" whichever is the longest period of time with whichever is the shortest period of time in the sixth whereas and section two. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees.
Councilwoman Wilmot?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a brief statement regarding 12B. That's the purchase of the roads, Williams and Jefferson Highway, and I wanted to make it known that it was my understanding that Rep Stagney was not in favor of that legislation either. So I just want to make the record be known. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Item eighteen is new business. We have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business, and our motions to reconsider are removed from a table position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Thank you. Mr. Clement?
I'm in receipt of a public notice, which I think the council recently put out for legal services. I have read the contract. I've read a few other things, and I think what the council needs is an accounting firm, not a legal firm. You're looking into illegality, fraud, conflicts of interest, violations, maybe now firehouse money. I don't think a legal firm is what you need. I think you need a forensic accountant and an accounting firm, and if they need a law firm to perhaps question witnesses, let that come before the council. I do believe the law firm is not appropriate. If you disagree, you've got selection and award. Number three is performance on past Kinnor contracts. I think legal firms that have represented the city in the past should be disqualified from this audit, or whatever you want to call it. My opinion, just something I noticed. Let me also publicly thank Councilman Branigan and Mr. Schreiner for reviewing my email and scheduling a meeting to discuss the Duncan Canal West Esalenade Project. I appreciate that it's going to be April 19 and open to the public. I guess one last thing, on your agreement or your contract that you're going to use to hire someone to conduct this audit, whatever it is, you've got a clause in there, which I think you ought to cancel or do something with. Under applicable law and venue, you're agreeing to award attorney's fees and court costs to the prevailing party. You would not want to award attorney's fees if you're not the prevailing party. Why can't that just be the City of Kinnor? Don't make it reciprocal, because if you lose, you're going to wind up paying attorney's fees and costs as well. So I think that really ought to be changed. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Clement.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Taft?
Greg Taft, 3720 West Loyola Drive. I have one comment. All of this has come about, read your emails, please.
Thank you. Mr. Salvador Pintarella? Mr. Salvador Pintarella? Thank you, sir. Almorella?
Almorella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 5th District, 50 years. It's been my belief and my opinion over the years that our government in Kinnor has been a puppet government of Jefferson Parish, and I want to tell you why I believe that. Go back to the beginning. In 1855, when Kinnerville was established, we tried several times to get a charter and failed. In 1873, we finally established a charter, and it had a provision that the citizens of Kinnerville were not obligated to any taxes in any kind of way to Jefferson Parish. Well, one lady, her name was Rebecca Phillies, she refused to pay anything to the parish and filed our charter. She was sued by the parish. They went into state court. She prevailed. The parish appealed and went all the way to the State Supreme Court, where she still prevailed. Then they tried to revoke the Kinnerville's charter, and they failed at that. Then they cut off all services and refused any kind of funding at all for this area. So they struggled, Kinnerville did. From 1873, well, it was 1885 when all of this took place with Ms. Phillies. So five years later, 1990, the dispute was still going on, but things started to get a little better. Then, in 1908, the citizens of Kinnor, they returned the charter to the state, and all government back there was dissolved. It wasn't until 1913, on December 13, that Governor Luther Hall reinstated our charter, and we became a charter city once again, up till this current time. So I believe, and given that history, and certain things that unfolded at the conclusion of this recent election cycle, that's what I based my beliefs on, and I still believe that, and I'll continue to believe. So I got any time left, Councilman Brennan? Well, I don't need them. I done said everything I wanted to say. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Morell. Mr. Patty Coward? Patty Coward, C-O-W-A-R-D. Isaac Coward? Stacy Alessandro?
Hello again, Stacy Alessandro, District Four. So much calmer now, but I do have some questions for either the mayor or Ms. Foshee. Do we have a building permit for the fire station? Has it been formally approved? Can we pause my talk, or I'm losing my tone?
Why don't you ask your questions? Let you respond.
Okay.
Ma'am, could you speak up?
Certainly. So my questions are going to be, do we have a building permit that has been approved that allows us, that has every approval needed, that we could break ground tomorrow if everything else was in place? Is there a building permit in place? My other question is, how much of that $1.9 million that was left over after we purchased the land, how much of that 1.9 do we still have in that account? Do we still have 1.9 million? My other questions are, what are going to happen to these two projects, the flyover ramp? Now that this didn't pass, and we don't have the match, I'm assuming, what happens to that project? Because, and this is a guess of mine, and I could be completely wrong, but it seems to me when that project got started, we would have had to tell them what account we had our match in, to show that we had our money before that project got started. I can't imagine the state doing these kind of projects like this without the funding in place. So I want to know, where was the funding coming from originally? Is that funding still there? And what happens now that this wasn't approved? And also, what happens now to the fire station that we don't have, so that this wasn't approved? Where's the money going to come from to build that station? And last question, I hope y'all are writing these down. Last question, when are we going to break ground on that fire station? And lastly, I don't know if I have a few seconds left. Okay, I would just like to point out that Citizens for a Better Kinnor begged and pleaded. We went to multiple meetings. We went to a private meeting with the mayor. We begged for the city not to buy this piece of land. We knew this was going to happen. We predicted it. We told y'all it was going to happen, that we weren't going to have enough money if we spent all the money on the land. And here we are, it fell on deaf ears, and now you're being held accountable, and we would like answers. We would like answers tonight. Everybody's here that has the answers, so I'd like my questions answered tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schreiner?
I can answer a couple of questions. One about the permit. Now, I think we stated earlier that the permit plans had already been submitted to code, and they have promised us an expeditions review of those plans. Any other issues? Hopefully somebody did write all our questions down. I think they had asked about a balance.
Do we still have 1.9 million for the firehouse?
I think that'd be a list question.
Currently, we have 775,000 left. Seven, yeah, 775,000. So we've spent 430,000 so far, and that's part of the surcharge fees, the design fees, the temporary location as well.
What happens to the flyover?
The funding for the flyover was always road transfer. When it was brought to us by DOTD, they said, "We are going to give you this, and this will count as your 1.5 towards the road, towards the flyover." So there was never any discussion with the state regarding us providing any funding other than through road transfer.
What happens to the firehouse now? I'm sorry, I'm just repeating what?
I'm sorry. What happens to the firehouse if there's no further funding?
I believe that's...
Yeah, I'm not sure.
So the when will we break ground is, I would answer that...
Whenever we find, right, exactly. When we replace the funding. This has been the funding formula for this project since the beginning of two, well, the end of 2018. This has been the discussion and negotiation since 2018.
And, Councilman, I know you're not asking the questions. You just wrote them down. I appreciate that, but I think that's what our presentation said. That's why we gave that presentation.
Okay. Please, please, no comments from the audience? Mr. Schreiner, do you have any other comments?
No.
Ms. Foshee, Mayor?
I'm fine.
Okay. Madam Clerk, that's the end of the list. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Boo.